Okay, it is 6:30. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Councilman in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Zamarone, will you lead us? Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't think we have anybody signed up for Citizen Comments. Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move straight to new business discussion on a potential economic development opportunity proposed by business prospect, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. We have representatives again here from Bakero to discuss further the potential development project. I believe they have information related to traffic studies and the market studies related to this project. And I think the intent and idea of this is for council to ask more questions in regards to development to ensure they have every question answered.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, I appreciate y'all giving this the due diligence that it deserves. Mr. Schnell and I had a quick conversation before. I think right now everything's up for grabs. We'll try to avoid having Mr. Plummer, who can tell us about everything, I guess legally, and then Mr. Breimer and his team, who could tell us about everything as it relates to the development. If we do get to a point that we need to get to executive session, I believe Mr. Schnell or Mr. Plummer will give me a nod and let us know that we need to go into executive session. So till then, we'll open the floor for discussion. Yes, Jim, we got that.
Mayor, would you like a presentation again from the developers?
Well, so why don't we go over the traffic study to start with?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for having us again. We did engage Kimley Horn and they're in the process of completing their traffic impact analysis. We did get a summary ahead of time, which describes the peak usage with our use and some access ingress and egress points that we will be limited to pursuant to issues with the city of San Antonio and Tech Dot. And I'd like to introduce Becca with Kimley Horn.
Hi, guys. My name is Becca Bond. I do work for Kimley Horn. I am a professional engineer, a traffic engineer, and I'm hopefully going to be able to answer all of your questions tonight. So I'll start out with a little bit of background. As you probably know, based on the presentations in the past, there we are proposing a multifamily development consisting of 300 dwelling units. So we've prepared a scoping document that we will get with you guys in the architectural committee to make sure the scope is all approved and meets the city of Castle Hills guidelines before we start prepping any official traffic studies. So I want to let that be known beforehand, and we can discuss that information tonight, too. So the purpose of today is we want to be able to provide trip generation information just to give you an idea of the impact that this development would have on the adjacent roadways. We will also, in the traffic study, address the impacts that the development has on all, like all the adjacent roadways, what study intersections, what growth rate we will be proposing and proposed access. So right now for the site, we are proposing access off of North Winston Lane only, and I want to go into detail about why we are not proposing on Lock Hill Selma or Northwest Military. And that is because of access spacing limitations set forth by Tech Dot in the city of San Antonio. Both Tech Dot and the city of San Antonio have really gotten stricter on what they're allowing in the city right now. The city of San Antonio recently released a RID, which is a subsequent document in between UDC updates that focuses on what's allowed for access spacing. And there with the property frontage that the site has on Lock Hill Selma, there is no access that would meet those spacing criteria. So we are just proposing that access on North Winston Lane and are proposing that we would study that access to make sure that there are no level of service issues and that we will mitigate for any additional traffic that's added to the development. And I can go into this in detail if we have questions about it, but we've talked about, we've provided traffic generation for what would be if the zoning did not change and a commercial development went in this area versus the multifamily. And there really is a significant traffic decrease with this multifamily use. So the impact that you would see on the adjacent roadways would be less with the multifamily use versus a commercial use, and I can go into more detail if you have questions about that.
Mr. Joyce?
Just one quick question, please, Ms. Bond. I recognize that all these trips are taken from the Tech Dot manual. And it just, I don't know, I'm just having a little intuitive problem with the numbers proposed here under your option one for the multifamily. We have a total of 138 trips, some in, some out in the morning and a little bit more in the afternoon. But there's 450 cars in that parking garage. Do those other people just not go to work? How do they arrive at that?
So these are actually based on the ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is an industry standard. So what they've done is they've put together studies for each of these different land uses where they've tracked the actual volumes that come and go from these different land uses at different peaks during the day. So these are standard rates that are used for this land use across the board. And I will also say for this one specifically, this multifamily is proposed as four floors, which would technically classify as mid-rise, but we've used a low-rise trip generation rate because that is a more conservative approach. So it's giving those higher volumes in the AM peak and the PM peak. So what you're seeing here is only an hour snapshot in time. And that's the heaviest hour of traffic during the day. So the rest of those trips you'll see filtered in throughout the different peaks. So what we'll do for the traffic study is we'll collect traffic volumes and make sure that we pick the highest where the adjacent roadways have the highest volumes for the most conservative approach. So we will add these trips on top of those when we go to do our study.
Okay, so all the decisions you've made in putting those numbers together are the most conservative approach that you could.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Mr. Paul?
Is this particular time in the process of being concerned about the traffic flow, or is that something that we wait until architect review and the appropriate committees take charge? Or do we, I mean, you know, we're not going into the traffic study in depth. We know that they will have an in-depth traffic study at the appropriate time. Is this that time? That's all I'm asking. To concern ourselves today.
Mr. Plummer, Mr. Schnell, can you give us some insight? Is this appropriate? We don't want to get too far down the road, but we want to make sure we're asking the appropriate questions.
It's very good question. Let's talk about process for a minute.
Can I have you slide over so we can? Please, thank you.
The process that we will go through is to first create a public facility corporation. The public facility corporation, standing alone, is just another tool in your toolbox. Is that better? Okay, so the first step we will take is create a public facility corporation. Creating a public facility corporation is just creating a separate entity. It is creating a tool in your toolbox. When we create the public facility corporation, you're not committing anything at that point. Public facility corporation will be formed. It will then approve the term sheet for the project. That term sheet will be a non-binding term sheet. We'll know what the business terms are, but it will give the developer enough comfort to really go spend the money to do the kind of detailed diligence that needs to be done. It will also say that here's the terms and conditions under which we're currently ready to proceed. We will then come back to you once we have the documents for the transaction, which will be a lease and a development agreement. When we have those, we will ask you to authorize those. When he has his financing raised, we will close, and you will then be bound to the transaction. From a scheduling perspective, I'd like to go ahead and create the PFC at the next available meeting because it doesn't bind you to anything. And it gives me a little time over these crazy Christmas holidays to get it through the Secretary of State's office, which might take me a week or two. Then we will schedule a meeting of the public facility corporation. You gentlemen will be the Board of Directors of the Public Facility Corporation. It will be a public meeting, just like this meeting, properly posted, available to the public, under the same terms and conditions. At that point, we would take up the term sheet, I would expect. Scott, if it fits in your schedule, I'd like to do that in January. That will then let Scott go turn loose, go through all your city processes. It may be a couple of months before we come back with documents, but you'll go through all the processes. You're not going to be bound to do any particular deal until every question is answered and you're satisfied. So right now, the most important thing on this traffic study is the initial concept that we cannot have exits in multiple different areas. And we think it's very important for you to consider that because we know that's an issue for you. And then they'll come back with a full detailed traffic study, but I have a feeling this young lady can probably answer any specific questions you have. So.
Just to clarify, right now would be appropriate for us to dig in and ask questions based on what we have here, right?
It would, and for example, I mean, in my overly simple mind, it's appropriate to ask, could there possibly be a light at any of those intersections, those kind of questions? Because then she knows what you're looking for, so she can then study it, and she may not have the answer, but she'll get it.
Got you. I think that answers your question, Mr. Paul.
I can also expand on that just a little bit. So right now, like, as I said, we've prepped preliminary materials to talk about the traffic impact, but we will also, as part of the TIA process in the city of Castle Hills, we have to go through a scoping process where we get all the different elements of what we are proposing for the traffic study approved. Then we will move into the actual traffic study itself, which will also have to be approved before anything can move forward. So yes, I can answer questions on anything that we have in the memo today or anything else that you want to bring up, but there will be opportunities for the city's input at that scoping meeting.
I always use this term. So what you're saying is we're looking at from 30,000 feet and we'll get down to 10,000 or 5,000 as we move along in the process.
Exactly, yes.
Mr. Esbrand?
Actually, I have a couple disparate questions, so I'll go from one to the other here. In the interest of the public having very accurate information and us being very informative to them, it's my understanding that prior to this proposal coming to the city council, that the developer met with residents in Castle Hills, a certain group of residents in Castle Hills. And in that discussion, there was conversation about egress access to the facility, which I believe at that time it showed that the entrance would be on North Winston Lane. And it's my understanding that they were told that it could be moved. So I want to make sure that what I've heard tonight and what you have written here is correct, that that is not the case. And I'd like to understand, then, if you could clarify for me one more time, why it cannot be moved from the proposed North Winston Lane access?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilman, you're 100% correct. We met with a neighborhood association. We had the entrance on Winston. Just intuitively, we felt like that was where it belonged. After meeting with the neighborhood group, they expressed their concern about ingress and egress coming off of Winston and ending up in their neighborhood. And is as not being a traffic engineer, we thought, hey, let's try to move this onto Lock Hill Selma. And we stayed with that plan until we engaged Kimley Horn. So unfortunately, we're not able to live with the things that we discussed at that meeting. So it's definitely something, a departure from what we discussed there. So.
Sure, sure. And I appreciate that. And that's why I bring it up, because I think it's important if there are residents who have that understanding, that that understanding is not correct. And I just want to make sure that whether there anyone is watching this tonight or goes back and looks at minutes later, that might have a question about it, understands what the difference is here tonight.
Yeah, and I can just repeat again, just in case anyone does come back and watch this, that yeah, the city of San Antonio, well, let me start with Lock Hill Selma is a city of San Antonio roadway, and city of San Antonio has very strict access spacing requirements. And with the frontage that the property has and the current placement of existing adjacent driveways, it is not feasible for those access spacing requirements to be met on Lock Hill Selma.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then the other disparate question I have is, is it formulaic when you compare this proposal to, well, if there was commercial development there, it would look like this in terms of volume of traffic. If there was medical facility, it would look like this, et cetera. Is there some kind of formula that's used here to give us this comparison?
Yeah, so what we did is we take the acreage of the site, and there's standards for typically about 25% of that acreage can be used for development. The rest of it is parking and is previous area and cannot be developed. So we take those, the 25% of the acreage and turn it into square footage. And what we've done is speaking with the developer and then based on our prior knowledge of other TIA's that we do, other developments we work on in the area, what size developments of the different land uses would make sense on that specific site.
So if this document, which will be public document, is viewed by residents, they should not interpret that, well, if this proposal doesn't go through with city council, then the next thing is going to be some kind of commercial development or whatever you're using as a comparison. There's no suggestion whatsoever that any of those things would replace this.
The reason we use the commercial is because the site's current zoning is commercial zoning. So the other options that we proposed are just options that are available that would not need rezoning to go on that site. But yeah, there is no guarantee that what the next development could be.
Yeah, so as an example, then, something could have been put in here that would factor in a rezoning case, that it is zoned differently and what the volume of traffic may or may not be at that case in a situation like that.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I just think that's important for people to understand that there's not an implication or suggestion here that if we don't do this, we're going to end up with this, so to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. May? I just have one question. On the diagram, it's unclear to me. Is there an allocation for an easement on the backside of the structure?
That would be a question for Richard. Do you know that?
An easement that would allow one emergency vehicle?
Oh, yeah, yes. Well, there is a driveway for emergency access and for trash access. So the city of San Antonio would not consider that a main access drive. It would be very limited volumes, you know, maybe one car a week for trash and then emergency access only. Yes.
So virtually any kind of utility vehicle could go on the backside of it and not have to be parked on Northwest Military, Lock Hill Selma, or Winston?
Yes, the main use for that is focused on fire access, just to make sure that you can have fire coverage throughout the whole building. I'm not, is it anticipated that it would be gated? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Richard Underwood, also with Kimley Horn and more on the land development side as opposed to the traffic engineer. Yes, the intention of that access is that it would be gated. It would have a Knox box lock on it that only the fire department could use and potentially working with the city on trash access, but it would not be open to the public.
Thanks.
Mr. Gregory?
Since I've sat here on the council, we've had two other groups come before us. We've requested traffic studies for what they wanted to do. First group didn't do it. They were denied. The second group came with an in-depth traffic study so we could look at it before we went forward and did anything. That study revealed a lot of pitfalls that were not known at the time. This is not a traffic study. This is what we plan on doing. I counted at least three different places of where you plan to do this, your process is going to do that, the evaluation will do this. It's not doing anything. This is not a comprehensive traffic study. This is what is needed, not after things get underway, but before things get underway. That's what we've required two organizations in the past to have, and they've come before this council. The last was the Basis School. You do not fulfill that. We've asked for this. We do not get it. You've gotten this very interesting piece of paper, but it doesn't tell you much of anything. Except there is a little line on the last that I don't quite understand, under mitigation requirements. Per the city's adopted roughly proportionally approached, whatever that is, the proposed multifamily development could be required to make up to, and you have a dollar amount down to an odd number of improvements as mitigation to offset impacts identified, so on and so forth. What are you saying there?
That is all based on the city of Castle Hills UDC. So that mitigation amount is the rough proportionality max for the site, and that's standard.
Go back. You've gone zip by those words very quickly. In English, what does this say?
So the code for the city of Castle Hills outlines how you will calculate the maximum dollar amount the developer will spend towards mitigation. So that dollar amount represents the amount that the developer could provide in improvements on the adjacent roadways to mitigate, to help like reduce delay on the streets adjacent to the site that are within the study area for the traffic study. So, and you are correct, right now, this is not a complete traffic study. This was intended to be a scope and a way to provide you with information on what will be done when the traffic study is complete. So the dollar amount that you see will be used for whatever mitigation us as traffic engineers need to recommend in order to keep the traffic running smoothly, keep it flowing, so that you don't have extra delay on your roadway because of the impact of this development.
Well, obviously, you must have some in-depth study that we do not have access to because you haven't rounded off the number. So it's clear you've got something that is very exacting. And I find it amazing that you think you can take a two-lane road and accommodate hundreds of vehicles in the morning and hundreds in the evening. Good luck. That's a very narrow road, and how does it impact the shopping center and the people who are in the shopping center during the day? If that road is clogged with people trying to get out of the apartment complex at various times, say in the evening. I think there might be an impact, negative impact, to the people who live in, who work in the apartment, the strip center right across from this building. There is no traffic, there is no study here, and this is the thing that was bothering me, on the impact of Lock Hill Selma and Northwest Military, of all these cars coming in and out at peak times of the day. That's not here. Maybe you define that's not within the scope. But it impacts the neighborhoods if you're going to clog Lock Hill Selma in the morning and nor try to push them all out Northwest Military in the evening or vice versa, or both. But you're just saying people will not have, as your words were, we will not give them access to those two streets. The access will only be to North Winston Lane. Does that mean once they get on North Winston Lane, they can go down to the end of North Winston and then turn on to Lock Hill Selma?
Yes, absolutely. And we have proposed to study North Winston and Northwest Military and are happy to, this is why we're discussing it, add Lock Hill Selma and North Winston, if that's what we need to do to make sure that, you know, we're covering everyone's concerns. And I'll also let you know, the number is down to an exact odd digit because it is based on, the code tells you to use the calculation that the city of San Antonio UDC has. So all you need to know is the density and the land use of the development. So that's how that's calculated. It's just a formula.
Why are we using what San Antonio tells us to do?
Because that's what the city of Castle Hills code references.
Okay. Well, I found this very, very light in information. I don't think it tells us much of anything. This is not what I think this council wanted. I'll just speak for myself. It's not what I wanted. I wanted a study. This is not a study. And I'm very disappointed. We had groups before us, and when a group before us didn't, we asked for a study and they didn't present a story. That was the end of that. And we had another, say, another group, and they presented a in-depth study for us to consider. So that's all I have to say on that subject right now.
Mr. Joyce?
Okay, so if you're looking for input from us on how to proceed with the big study, I guess one of the questions I would have is, as you look at the cars exiting onto Winston, how do you figure who goes to Lock Hill and who goes to Military? Who's going north? Who's going south? Do you figure different options? You know, maybe one morning, three quarters of them will want to go to Lock Hill, the next morning, maybe three quarters want to go to Military. I don't know. How do you figure all of that stuff out?
So there's a standard distribution of traffic. That's exactly what you're talking about. That's included in one of the exhibits. I'm not sure if you have the exhibits with you right now, but that's something that we would discuss with the architectural committee to make sure that they are in agreeance with where we believe the traffic will be originating. So right now, we have it proposed based on previous approved TIA's matching what has been approved by the city of Castle Hills in the past, but that is always open for discussion. And if the architectural committee feels that what we are reflecting is incorrect, we will make adjustments before we get to the big, you know, in-depth traffic study. It is also based on a general overall global distribution, so it doesn't get into, you know, maybe one day someone decides to go a different direction. It is all based on a global distribution broken down into like 5% increments.
Okay, it sounds like the neighbors group that the developer group spoke with is concerned about traffic getting into their neighborhood. Do you have a way of anticipating that?
Well, what we will do is we will collect traffic counts at all the study intersections. So that'll tell us what the current traffic, what movements they are making in the peak hours of the day. So we'll take two hours in the AM peak of measurements and collect the data there. And then we will also do that for two hours in the PM peak, and that will be added into our study. So that will serve as our existing conditions, and then we will build upon that to create a no-build scenario and then a full build-out that has all of our trips added in.
You'll propose a single option or will it be multiple options about how traffic might work?
It would be a singular option. That is typically how it's done, but that is why we have not moved forward yet because we want the buy-in from the city of Castle Hills and from that architectural committee before we make any final decisions.
Ms. Bond, we don't come across traffic studies very often, so I apologize if some of the questions are seem ignorant from somebody that does this all the time. I appreciate your working with us. So is this something that typically will pray like come before a actual traffic study is presented?
Yes, this is very typical. It would be, we typically prepare for, for any jurisdiction scoping packet, even if it is not outlined in their code. It is basically a pre-development meeting, but traffic version. So it's, it's getting buy-in from the people who are the most familiar with the city that are the most familiar with what their citizens want in order to have that knowledge when we go into a study. We don't want to make all the assumptions for you. We want you to be able to have input before we get started.
Got it. Thank you. It's kind of what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. So once you get the buy-in and feedback from us, how long would it be until we could expect a full traffic study?
I will say right now with the holidays coming up, the, the traffic data collection gets a little bit delayed. So based on when we, we typically like to get a written, you know, agreement that, that it, you guys agree with the scope, that everyone's on agreeance. And I believe the architectural committee's next meeting is the first Wednesday of January. So in order to get that full buy-in, we would need to be able to attend that meeting. Then traffic counts usually take two weeks to get complete and you could typically anticipate to see a traffic study within, within a month.
Got you. In your experience, how close is that calculated traffic mitigation number to reality?
Well, it is, I would say very, very close. We model it in a standard program. It's called Synchro. So we get the traffic volumes in, we build a network. It's standard, industry standard. So we input the existing values. We calculate the current delays at each of the study intersections. And then we will add in our trips on top of that. After we've grown the background traffic to the proposed build-out year. And then we will model it again and see how the delays increased. And then from there we will add in turn lanes. We will signalize intersections. We will add in any, any form of mitigation that we can to reduce that delay to the acceptable standard.
Got you. Thank you. And one last question. You said that you try to keep traffic moving smoothly and smoothly is a relative term.
Yes.
From the, what we had experienced in the past, they assign a grade at the traffic light and you ideally want to keep the grade the same.
Yes.
That's what I would identify as smooth. And if, can you give us a little bit more background on that and what we could expect in a perfect world to, to keep it smooth?
Absolutely. So in the city of Castle Hills, what is considered acceptable grade would be a level of service C. Level of service is defined by the number of seconds that you are waiting at a stop sign or at a signalized intersection. So a level of service C, I actually thought this might be a question and I brought the description. So a level of service C is moderate delays at intersections with satisfactory to good traffic flow with infrequent backups on critical approaches. So that is pretty standard. Level of service C across all jurisdictions that is considered acceptable. There are cases where in existing conditions, some intersections might behave below a level of service C and then you need to match the existing. Otherwise you have to get back to that C grade.
Got you. And so if traffic, I imagine that that's going to be the only way to turn left unless people have to go to Lock Hill and go around. Would that involve any kind of working with Tech Dot on Northwest Military to adjust the timing on the lights there?
That would be a possible mitigation. So we will reach out to Tech Dot for their signal timings and that'll be part of our model. So if it does turn out that there is additional delay there, we, we will propose adjusting the signal timing, adding turn lanes at that intersection, and then eventually that design would go through Tech Dot. Yes.
Got you. And my last comment is I agree with Mr. Gregory in getting Lock Hill Selma evaluated. I would ask if you could do that. And I'd also extend that to Northwest Military because my concern is there's not a lot of traffic on South Winston right now. So that light's not being triggered as often as it would likely be. So I'm concerned about how much backup we're going to experience on Northwest Military, you know, in front of the school and then to the north as well.
Absolutely. We will include both of those as study intersections.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gregory.
Whether or not we approve Public Facility Corporation Board of Directors, will this scope study be done?
So we've had to do a number of things over the last couple of months. And the first was to get past the concept of do you even want to do a PFC? Do you want an apartment community at this location? Is this something that you all are interested in? And, and, and that's taken, and I knew it was going to take a lot of time to see if folks were interested in doing it. And that it has taken a lot of time. Us as the developer, you know, we've had to tie the site up and pay a significant amount of money and option money to, to keep the site tied up. And it's, it's, it's like a train. You've, you know, you're, you're, you're keeping everything going all at the same time, not knowing if you're going to get to the destination. And we don't know if we're going to get to the destination with you all, even if you approve the formation of a PFC, but at least there's an idea that it's, you know, it, it's worth us spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to see if we get to the destination. And everything that like what Kim Lee Horn will be doing in this, what we're incurring for architectural fees, et cetera, is really just you know, a bet to see if we'll all get there. And so I think we're, while all of these things are logical and they'll get, we'll get to the, the ultimate conclusion. One's got to come before the other and, and we have, we, we really need you all to, to decide if you want to see if we can get to the destination together. And if we can't, then that's on us. But I can't get you Kim Lee Horn's answer between the last meeting and now because she didn't, she hasn't been able to meet with the city to, you know, for, for all of the things that are necessary to, to scope this out the way you all are going to want it scoped out. So I guess our ask here tonight is do we want to get to the destination if we can? You know, we'll, we'll meet all of the objectives that you're looking for, or we won't end up doing the deal. And we've got to be satisfied as well. So I think, you know, it's a bit of a chicken or the egg on all of this. And we're not, we have zero interest in ramming anything down anybody's throat. Councilman Isbrun, you're a hundred percent right about the conversations with the neighborhood group. And if it's a problem, I'd rather pack up our bags right now and not do it and not push a stone up the hill. I so that's where we're at. Everything will be done that we can possibly do to ensure that this is a development that meets y'all's standards and the community standards, including what Kim Lee Horn is doing to make sure there's not a negative impact on the city of Castle Hills.
For us. So the question was, and you didn't answer the question. Will the traffic study be done if we do not approve tonight a PFC?
If I can pause real quick, the, the PFC is not on the agenda, Mr. Gregory.
I understand that.
So there's no way we can approve that tonight.
The board of directors to be on that PFC is on this tonight, is it not?
I don't believe so, unless you have a different one than I do.
It is not. So this has nothing to do with the PFC.
No, sir.
When would you do, when would you do the traffic study? When would you feel you have an okay to do a traffic study?
If I could be as frank as possible, I, I'd like to, to see what y'all think. If you, if, if this is something that you all want, want to endeavor upon, we'll go to the time and the expense to do it, to satisfy you. But if this is just, we don't like an apartment community there. We don't like the economics of what you all are proposing. We don't like the color of your jacket. Then that's absolutely fine. I, I can't in good conscience continue to spend my company's capital to keep the site tied up and to pay the third party professionals that we're currently paying. If this isn't even something you all want to do. And to date, we don't know if this is something that you all even want to do. So my, my ask, trying to just lay out, let, lay everything out is I just need to know if this is a business proposition that you all want to make. And then to, to your, to answer your question, then I would feel comfortable continuing to spend the money. And then you still have the opportunity to say no. But if it's just totally off the table, then I'd rather just go get a cup of coffee somewhere, you know? And, and, and I, and I mean that in the most sincere way I could say that. We, we, so anyhow, thank you.
Mr. Bremer, I think what Mr. Gregory is trying to get to, and I'll ask it very bluntly, is getting the full traffic analysis, or is, I'm sorry, is creating the community development program a prerequisite to getting the full traffic analysis?
It's probably a hundred thousand dollar endeavor to do that, not knowing if you all are even interested in the program. So to me, if you all can still say no at any time, but conceptually you're not allergic to the idea of a, a, a PFC, then I'm willing to spend that time and those, in, in, in that capital to do that. If you're allergic to a PFC, I, I don't want to spend a hundred thousand dollars.
Personally, I think that the process has been laid out pretty good by the attorneys. And I think it's in a timely manner. I believe this council has acted timely based upon when we obtained the information. And I think we're moving forward because I would suspect that everybody up here thinks as far as things, if they work out numbers wise and it's good for the city, we're all for it. So I'm all for personally having the, or the attorneys proceed with the process that he's already stated for us. And we can always, as you say, stop. I would think that the completed, again, back to my original question. I would think that the completed traffic study would be by the time it goes to ARC. And, and that's where they will do their job to determine whether or not things work or not. And that's why I said it in the beginning. I don't think we're here tonight to make that decision on the traffic. And I'm sure that the traffic study or the results will tell us whether we could do it, we can't do it or not. And that's why we have a very astute architect review board.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know how the traffic study is going to turn out. And I'm, I'm, I'm willing to see how, how it'll turn out. And it may not be positive for us. I don't, I don't know. But that's what we do is, is take those kinds of risks. If there's, if there's a willingness to, to, you know, go to the idea. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Council, I think we find ourselves in a very precarious situation with probably one of the most progressive councils that we've had in this city for a long time. And I would implore my colleagues up here to give consideration to what is being proposed to us, but I would also ask that we're mindful of the diligence and the money and the time that they have put into it and not, and I don't think we are, but not lead them down a road, a road without having some inkling that we're actually interested in this because I believe that's the way of Castle Hills' past and I do not believe that that's the way of Castle Hills today. I'm personally in support of going forward and seeing if this is going to fit. I do not believe that we should try to squeeze a square peg in a round hole. So that's my personal input going forward, Mr. Bremer. Mr. Isbrun?
Mayor, I appreciate your appeal there, but I'm not quite sure then what it is that we're supposed to do. If, if we're not, you know, my understanding is we should be asking a lot of tough questions so that we understand before we vote to do anything, at least from my perspective, what exactly we're getting into or how far down the road that we're going. So I thought tonight was to be able to ask some of those questions. I certainly appreciate everything Mr. Bremer said. I don't think anybody wants to spin their wheels. And, you know, his comment that was, you know, in good conscience, can't do this. Well, in good conscience, we have to think about the impact that this has for 75 years on this city. And I think it's important that we give it the time to be able to ask these questions. Some of them may not be, you know, in a neat order here. If, if the suggestion is that we need to make some declaration tonight on, or send some signal tonight, I don't know that we're capable of doing that without the benefit of all the information that we need. So I, I sympathize with the awkward position that we're in. It is a chicken or egg, or it's a question of who's going to give first here. I would like to continue asking questions and see where it goes if, if that's permissible.
And Mr. Bremer, if I interpreted what you put down correctly, I think you're open to answering more questions. And I read between the lines, I think that there is not a hard ultimatum. But if you feel that this council is genuinely interested, then you will invest the money for a full traffic analysis?
A hundred percent. What I have not been able to gauge is if an apartment community is of interest to you all and if a PFC is of interest to you all. I think there's generally pretty quick reactions in, in the PFCs that I've been involved in with the boards. It's either we hate it or we love it, or we think it's, you know, can, worthy to continue to explore. And so, no, I'm absolutely not asking for anything other than, and you guys have, have not been given, you know, every piece of information that is available to you. It'll happen through the process. So I, I just, I want to be a good steward of my company's money, that my employer's money. And if this is, you know, if this is, I, I will a hundred percent spend the capital to get you all the answers. If the answer is no, the answer is no. But you, there's generally a very visceral, you know, reaction to a PFC or not. And I, I personally have not been able to, I wouldn't want to play poker against any of you guys. And it's, it's, it's just, I don't know which way, I don't know which way you guys are, where your heads are.
Mr. Isbrun, if I may, the agenda is set up in such a way that there's not really any action other than the potential for the community development plan. In my mind, I think if you have more questions about anything, we have some of the brightest people in the city here that can answer that. And hopefully if not, they can figure out where to get the answer tonight. And going forward, I think Mr. Bremer can tell by the way the questions are going. If this, this is a good idea for him to get a traffic analysis done and spend the money that goes along with the bet.
And yes. We're on board.
One problem that I have is that you're asking laymen to understand your business. I don't know about the rest of the council, but I don't have anything close to in-depth understanding of what is going on from your side of the point of view. I don't know what, exactly what questions to ask. You know what questions that we should be asking. We don't. We, we have, the council so far has not gotten anybody to come a third in, disinterested third party to come up and explain a lot of things. And a lot of questions that I would have. And I can remember an old city manager that we had years ago. He led me, he, he would always say, but have you thought about so and so? And eight out of 10 times I hadn't thought about it. I am sure there are quite a few questions that I haven't thought about that I should be asking as a fiduciary of this situation. This is a big decision for the city that will impact us for 75 years.
Sure.
And all the questions that I, I, I don't think at this stage of the game, I've been, been close to being able to ask you all the questions as a fiduciary that I should ask, but I don't know. And I think we, the council ought to have some guidance from somebody that isn't a great fan of these PFCs or at least can explain these things and the long-term impact of the city. I asked one question that I thought was germane. And I, I think it's critical on really how much money are we actually giving up potentially over this course of 75 years? I've heard no response back. And, but that has to do with the calculation and I, I don't do it. I'm sure you guys can of the property growing its X every year. Party taxes X every year, the compounded interest of what is being lost. But that's just on the narrow scope that I have, but I'm sure all these men have, they come at it from a point of view, from the understanding of what they have. from the understanding of what they have. I just don't know what to ask.
Sure.
Exactly. You all sit there frankly with all the trumps. And I think we're the dummy. And it's up to us to ask the question if we know what to ask. And I'm, it's a very uncomfortable situation for, at least for me, that, that I could be missing salient points because I just don't know what to ask.
If I may, I can promise you, you all have asked all the questions that are normally asked. Are there a few that you haven't? Sure. I don't, but, but I don't, uh, I've not heard anything here that I haven't been asked before. And, you know, I, I, I think, uh, Jim Plummer is, you're very well represented by him because I think he's actually, well, I've been on the other side of him for four transactions now. And, uh, he has, um, narrowed the shoot, uh, on, on, you, you don't really get anything by Jim, uh, if you're on the other side of him. So I think you're very well represented there. I, I, I don't, I, there, there isn't, we have done an analysis of what tax you would receive and what the benefits you'll get out of the PFC. And it's probably 10X what you would have gotten, in my view, if I'm correct about the numbers. It's probably 10X what you would get over the next 10 years from normal tax, uh, receipts for this. And that's, and I think Jim can walk you through that. But we, we have done that because we've been asked that question. We've had to provide a net present value calculation for that. And, um, it, everybody ultimately asks that question. And it's, and, and you'll see it, uh, in, in the analysis, and you can challenge the assumption here or there. But like Herb Keller has said, if you can't do it on the back of a napkin, you know, it, it, it'd be very, it'd be within 5%. So, you know, my experience. But anyhow, gentlemen, I think you all have asked really great questions. I, I knew this was going to be a, a challenging thing because you all don't have a, you're not real estate developers. You're not in the business of, of, uh, developing sites within your community. And, uh, so, so you, you think about it every month, when, you know, once a month when we come in, right? So, uh, we'll, we'll do our best to answer all the questions. Again, I'm not interested in doing anything that's, uh, adverse to the community. And, you know, and so, anyway, uh, Jim, do you have anything you want to add to this? Okay. Okay. I'm very conversational in the way I speak. I apologize for that, but, but, uh, I feel like we're having a conversation, so.
Well, I do want from you all to give me not just a 10-year study, but a 75-year study, assuming a growth rate that you projected that the building will appreciate, carried through for 75 years. And the average and the growth rate of the property tax rate that the city has done, carried through 75 years. And how much property tax would have been collected and compound that over the 75 years? I think you're going to find it's an enormous number. Now, the short term, it looks good, but for five years, it'll look really good. But we're, we're, we're here long after you all have gone and sold the building. We live here, we have skin in the game, you're here to build, develop, flip, and you're gone. And that's what you're supposed to be doing. But I just need, I would like to have, and I would appreciate if I could get those 75-year number figures available.
One key component assumption in that analysis is what the use is going to be because that's how you figure out the value. And I, I would need to make some guesses at what potential uses might be, um, which we can do, but there, there, there's, there'll simply be guesses as to what will go, what will be there ultimately if we don't do something. So, um, we could put three or four of them down and do that analysis. And I, I, I do, I respectfully disagree with, um, with, with what, uh, you said about the, uh, the, the, the delta that there will be between what you collect through that process and what, what the benefit of this would be. But I'll, we'll, we'll, we'll just have to prove it to you, and I think we can do that.
I, I can solve it right now. Excuse me. I'm going to put in a rent provision that takes your rent, takes your tax rate, the overall tax rate, so school, county, city, everybody. And your tax rate as a percentage of that. So let's just say that the city tax rate is 25% of the overall tax rate being charged today. We'll have a minimum guaranteed rent equal to 25% of the taxable value of the project times the tax rate. And then you always know you will do better by doing this deal than doing, than collecting taxes. And so, um, we can handle that by having a guaranteed minimum rent and, and take care of that. But your question is perfectly appropriate, and we will run numbers for you. In order to make the numbers have any semblance of sense, what we will do is we will assume this property will not develop for five years, that this property will not develop for 10 years, that this property not, will not develop for 20 years. And you can take a look at that. And then what we're going to use as the value of the development, because that's crystal ball, is the purchase price of this, the total budget for this project. And then you'll be able to compare the two as best we can do.
You're saying you're going to have a static number, value of the project for 75 years?
No, we'll take the value of the project, we'll grow it by inflation of, say, 3% and assume the taxes are increasing by 3%. And we'll compare that to the numbers that will be put forth in this deal.
What is the growth rate you're currently projecting this thing to do if it goes through for the first five or 10 years?
I think the numbers project a 3%, no, a 2% increase in income and a 3% increase in expenses. I'd say the current, is it backwards? Okay, 3% in income, 2% in expenses.
Regardless of inflation.
You, you gotta run a pro forma, and that's pretty much the standard pro forma for real estate transactions. See virtually everything I see, and that's what the bankers use. So that's why.
Be sure to compound that money and just not have a static number.
That makes sense.
Compounding it. Well, it's hard to, to use a compounding of what, because the 30-year treasury is abnormally low due to what the Federal Reserve is doing, but you might use, uh, probably sick 5 to 8%, somewhere in that range. It's what a 30-year bond used to carry for years and years and years. So I would compound it somewhere between 5 and 8%.
No, we could do that as long as we do it on both sides of the transaction, we should be fine. So we can run those numbers. That, that's not a problem. And, and, but the real guarantee for you is not a number run. It's a formula in a lease that guarantees that this city will collect more taxes under this deal than it would have taxing this building.
Will that be carried forth no matter who owns the building?
Yes, and I can build that into the lease for the 75-year term. So now, the numbers we're going to walk through in a minute don't contain that provision. But we can put it in, and that can be our required minimum rent. And then you're in a position to turning to your citizen and saying to your citizen, our taxes are whatever it is, 22%, 23% of the overall tax collection. And the formula for our rent is going to be equal to that percentage times the value of the project as determined by the appraisal district. And then you know you're collecting an equal amount.
Mr. Plummer, I thought the number was 25%.
It is 25%. I don't know exactly what your tax rate is.
I think our taxes are around 21, 22. So we, we'd be positive a delta.
A four.
Two, three, four, right around there. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Plummer. I'm a little more basic and simple-minded. I ran the numbers on assuming we have a market builder. And we have this, uh, this entity. And there's really no doubt in my mind, the amount of money that we would receive over the market by doing it this way. It's just a tale of two cities here. The only question is that we have to be assured in the document, and this is why I asked you earlier about what's the next process because we need to follow the process before we can answer all the questions. And that's how the document reads and the control of the process and the control of the entity itself to make sure that the city is protected on this side over here. And in answer to Mr. Gregory's question or comment while ago, I believe you are our expert that will tell us and answer the questions for us when we get into session to do that. Am I correct?
I, I, I think I'm, I'm as much of an expert as there is on this subject.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
Sure.
And, um, Mr. Plummer, another point of clarification, you said that the first step would be a PFC, but if I understood correctly, the first step would be the C D P, correct?
Yes, they, they go on dual tracks.
Okay.
Okay, so tonight you could take the first step and instruct us to start down the road of the E D P. And then we can bring back a, a PFC set of documents whenever you're ready. From, from my perspective, I do it that way because I, I think that you are indicating that you are interested in possibly proceeding. But I'm not asking you to approve a project in any way. I don't think we're ready to ask you to approve a project in any way. So it's one step. So we take baby steps. That baby step gives Mr. Bremer the comfort he needs to go spend money. And this is how we've, we've done this dance throughout all of these deals is, and Mr. Bremer, what Mr. Bremer is really asking you is if, if the answer is hell no, tell him, he'll go away. If the answer is, you know, this is intriguing, but I don't have enough information to make a decision. So we're going to start down the road of getting the information we need to make a decision. And we're not going to be bound to anything until everything is known and you have the information you need to make a decision. But at least you're indicating, okay, this is intriguing enough for us to really begin digging in and looking. And frankly, gentlemen, you've been doing that now for three meetings. You, I wouldn't be here today. This meeting wouldn't be happening if, if you weren't already of the mindset that this is worth looking at. And so I think, I think all we're, we're going to do here tonight, you might start the E D P, maybe your next meeting, you start the PFC process. But we're not going to ask you to be bound until you're comfortable. And, and that's, that's how we take these steps. I'm not going to let a client say, yes, we're doing this deal when they don't have the information they need to make that decision. So that's why you're being asked to take baby steps and move things forward.
Would you say there's anybody in your industry who manages money for cities, municipalities, or school districts who would define this as an extremely bad risk for our city?
I'm not aware of anybody who would define this as an extremely bad risk. I will tell you that the only experience I have with financial advisors that advise cities so far has been that they have recommended these deals as a way to bring about a project. If, if you believe the project is good for your community, I believe you will not get this project in your community in any other way. If you gentlemen have a developer in your back pocket who will walk out there and build this kind of market rate product without this structure, then you should not do this deal. The van's land has been vacant for ever. And if you're interested in bringing this kind of project to your community, this is a way to get it done with very minimal risk, no investment. Um, and, and I personally think it, it is a good deal assuming that the real estate deal works. So, and, and I'll grant you, it is a real estate deal. It could not work. But so far, everyone we've participated in has been successful.
Well, I was at a seminar last week. Texas Municipal League presented a Public Funds Investment Act training, two-day seminar. It was headed by Linda D. Patterson. She's the president of Patterson Associates and runs over $7 billion of money under management from small cities, school districts, municipalities, and agencies. So the firm serves public and private entities with full investment advisory service and cash management consulting. I went up and talked to her, and I said, we're considering having a PFC. She stopped me there. She said that is an extremely bad risk for a small town. I asked her if I could quote her. She said, you can quote me. She said, this is basically low-income housing. No matter how it is, how it is described, it is low-income housing. She said, you are losing control of a lot of things you don't realize you're losing control of. Now, this is a woman who has a Fulbright, she's a Fulbright scholar, and she's headed by the Texas Municipal League to advise treasurers, seat, and financial advisors across the state and has been doing so for 20 years. She was adamant. She said, it, quote, "an extremely bad risk." So this is just not a, no one thinks this is a bad thing. She thinks it's an extremely bad risk. But I, I find it's interesting how language comes into play. She immediately said, this is low-income housing, no matter how you look at it. You all don't describe it as low-income housing anymore. You describe it as workforce, something, or somewhere around it, workforce housing. But she says, no matter how you look at it, it's low-income housing. And she was, uh, she said, I hope your city doesn't get trapped in something like that.
I'd be really interested to talk to her.
Well, I, I was.
Because I don't think she knows what she's talking about.
Well, this is a person that the Texas Municipal League has, are to talk and manage $7 billion of funds under management of cities. But I asked her if I could quote her, and she said extremely bad risk for your, for his.
I, I don't know how she gets there, but I'd love to talk to her.
Mr. Plummer, does a Class A project equate to a low income?
No, sir. And we're going to go through the rents being charged here, and I think you'll get comfortable. This is.
And this is identified when we'd be laid out as a Class A project, if I remember our discussion. Okay, thank you.
However, what percentage of this project? I found this interesting, the mix you have here of people who are earning a certain amount of money, and I thought it was here. What percentage of the people who are in this building have to have the 80% of the, not even the average income of San Antonio, but only 80% of the income of San Antonio? Is there a legal percentage you gotta have?
Yes, it's 50%.
What if you don't get 50%?
So far, we haven't had that problem, but you have to leave the units vacant and bring people in and go out and find them.
So, and this is low income. When you consider 80% of the average income of San Antonio, it squares down from about 50-something thousand dollars. 80% of that is 30-something thousand dollars.
No, sir.
I got my figure from the World Almanac, and I think other people will get their figure from the Census.
We, we will define the median income is the Metropolitan Statistical Area median income for San Antonio. Median income is currently $74,100. So it would be 80% of that number.
And that number comes from where?
HUD.
So World Almanac is wrong, and the Census is wrong.
No, the Census is giving you, the, the World Almanac is probably out of date, but the Census, um, I don't know whether it's current census, but the current census for the city of San Antonio probably has a lower income level. This is the San Antonio Metropolitan Statistical Area, and it goes from New Braunville down to South San Antonio. Um, and that number is a number published by HUD every year. So, and it's in our documents, will contain a specific. So, and it's in our documents, will contain a specific reference to exactly where to look for that number. And that's the number that we'll use.
So 80% is not San Antonio. You're grabbing all, you're grabbing Alamo Heights, Terrell Hill. So that's very, is that what the act is?
Yes, that's what the act, yes, that's what the act says, 50% of 80% of area median income. So, yep, state law.
Of, of area income. And the definition of area, once again, in the act is?
It's, it's as HUD calculates it, if you're in a primary statistical area, it's that area. If you're in an individual county that's not part of an MSA, then it's the county income. And you can look them up on a website called huduser.com. And it will have all of the income information for the country.
Thank you.
Mr. Plummer, if I remember correctly, based on the numbers, and I guess we'll probably get into that next, but only six of the units were low, I guess workforce housing units, is that right?
No, only 60 units had a rent that was below the market rate rent.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The rest of them all had market rate rents.
Got you. Counsel, do we have any more questions before we potentially dig into the financials?
Well, I, I, I still had another question related to the traffic study. But I guess if the suggestion is being made that there's no point in talking about the traffic study until we send a signal on whether we are interested in moving this forward, then I guess I, I could hold those, that question.
If you, anybody feel free to chime in, but if your input is germane in the way that they're going to proceed with the traffic study, I, I would encourage you to share your input.
It's, it's a question, and it, it goes to what Mr. Joyce was asking earlier, and I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So the way I read this is when you do the traffic study, you're looking at Lock Hill-Salma, you're looking at Northwest Military. So if you on any given morning were to drive out of, assuming this complex is there now, you drive out of it, you turn left onto North Winston Lane, you come down to Lock Hill, you come down to Northwest Military. Traffic will be backed up at least from West Avenue all the way up through the, perhaps beyond Honeysuckle going north because of all the congestion, all the volume of traffic that is going on there. Which raises the question to me, and what I'm trying to understand is, so someone who wants to get to 410 that way is probably, may be inclined not to want to turn onto Northwest Military and sit in that traffic. So their easy solution would be to drive down South Winston Lane and cut across. Whether it be later down, and we see that happening right now with the schools, issues going on with the schools and how people use it for that. I think the, the long, long-winded, but what I'm trying to understand is what consideration or study or assessment would be done on that scenario, that potential impact on South Winston Lane?
Well, I can tell you that we will be studying that intersection of Winston and Northwest Military. So we will be able to see the volumes that are currently, you know, cutting through, like you say, on South Winston. So those will be taken into consideration. I'm not sure if it would, you know, ease your concerns if there was an additional study intersection added on South Winston. That's always a possibility moving forward. Like, we are here to make sure that you feel comfortable with, with what's in this study. And I will also say that the hope would be that we can provide mitigation at that intersection to improve the delay that is there. So we will be looking into all options when we run our models of how we can make that, that delay improved.
And, and I appreciate that. And, and the reason that I asked this and why it's important, and it goes back to Mr. Breimer's visit with the residents there. And the first thing they say is, we don't want this traffic there. So the promise is to move it somewhere else. And now that promise can't be fulfilled because of all these other constraints. And I think we owe it to those residents who have this concern to be able to assure them that we would do or ask to be done whatever can be done to give a data-driven factual assessment, not a theory, a wish or whatever, on what the potential impact on them would be. Because I think that's part of our obligation is to be looking out for the well-being and welfare of our community, right? And if this is of concern to that neighborhood, they've been told something that can't happen now. Does, is it bringing back that same scenario again? So if we go into a traffic study and we aren't factoring that in, then we aren't really being responsive to their concerns. And my desire here would be that we do be responsive to their concerns.
Absolutely. We will take that into full consideration. And I will also say that moving the driveway, even if it was feasible on Lock Hill-Salma, I think you, the, the traffic movements are, are likely to be the same. It's, it's moving from shore, one roadway to another, but you're still going to see the same global distribution. And you're still going to see people taking the same routes that they would. I will also say that our job as traffic engineers is to meet all of the constraints set forth by the city. So like, like we said, this development won't move forward without an approved TIA. So this, you will have the opportunity to review and make sure that we are adequately addressing these concerns on South Winston.
Yeah. And, and thank you. I, I appreciate that. And that's why I think this part of the discussion is important to be talking about the traffic study or what the traffic study would, would look like. Because for us to determine whether we really have any interest in this, I think, requires us to be assessing these types of situations. And when we hear from the public about them, to be able to assure them that that will be evaluated. Not that we're going to send a signal because someone wants a signal sent of whether we're interested or not in it, but that the signal being sent is that we're watching out for the well-being of our residents.
Absolutely.
Becca, Ms. Vaughn, if I may. Would it be possible to watch the signal at Northwest Military and West Avenue? Because I feel like if that one were to get potentially backed up, that would lead people to Mr. Isbrand's point to cut through the neighborhood, which already had expressed their concern. So if, you know, we saw that they were going to be negatively impacted at West Avenue and Northwest Military heading towards 410, we know that they may deviate and cut through the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's always a possibility.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have any other questions from Ms. Vaughn? Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
We will proceed on to item number two. Deliberate regarding an offer of a financial other incentive to the business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate in the city and with the city council conducting economic development negotiations, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, elaboration regarding economic development negotiations. Mr. Plummer, I'm, I'm trusty. You'll tell us if we get to a point that we need to get to executive session.
Yes, sir, I will. Can you pull up the numbers? I want to run through the numbers for this project. And I'm going to do it here. Because I think, I think you ought to have a good idea and your community ought to have a good idea what this looks like.
Brian, do we have the numbers?
Yes, sir. It is. Okay, okay, okay. I'm going to walk through them real quick. As you've seen, this is a $63 million project. It'll have a construction loan of approximately $41 million. It will need to raise equity of $22 million. In order to raise that equity, Mr. Breimer will go to a third party that is shown as the LP equity here. That will be a company that is used to investing in apartment projects as the equity investor. They will invest $19.9 million. Mr. Breimer's company will invest $2.2 million into this transaction. And then I assume the $250,000, which would be your fee, will be also raised as part of the equity. It'll build approximately a 300 to a 306 unit apartment project. It'll have 201, 208 one-bedroom units, 86 two-bedroom units, and 12 three-bedroom units. On the next page is a rent schedule. In that rent schedule, you will see that listed by bedroom size. And you'll note that there are many, many different sized bedrooms in this project. But to give you an example, the lowest rent estimated for the project today is $1,117 for a 553 square foot apartment project. If that number jumps up to, I'm going to get down to the largest one bedroom. An 866 square foot one bedroom will rent for $1,490. The two-bedroom rents run from approximately $1,490 down to $1,789. And the three-bedroom rents will max out at $2,410. These rent rates are the equivalent of some of the highest, some of the highest in the city. They are rents that you would normally see like close to the medical center, Pearl, Alamo Heights. These are Class A, very high-end rental rates. The next page simply shows you the revenue calculation. This is what's called a stabilized revenue calculation. This would occur probably in year three. And it is their basic, once we are 100% leased up estimate of revenue. Then you'll see that their net operating income here is $4,344,000. Now, the net operating income number is important because that is essentially how apartment projects are valued. In order to determine a valuation or a sales price of an apartment project, you take the net operating income and you divide it by a cap rate. A cap rate, a capitalization rate? The chart below that is showing an assumed sell in year five. You'll see that the net operating income has increased from $4,303 to basically $4,606. And there are three different capitalization rates under that. 5.0 is the cap rate that they're targeting. That is today's cap rate. If they got to a, a 4.7 cap rate, it would significantly increase the profit from the transaction. If the cap rate goes up a little bit to 5.25, it would reduce the profit. If you compare the bottom line numbers in the left column and the right column, you will see that that half a percent in change in the cap rate changes the value of this project by $9 million. So the cap rate at the time that the project sale is very important. You are being offered a $250,000 closing fee. You're being offered an annual rent beginning in year three, the year of stabilization, which is 25% of the taxes that would have been imposed upon this building or 25% of the net income from the building after capitalized interest is paid to the equity investor. It will almost always be 25% of the tax value of this building. That's going to be a higher number. And then when this building is sold, which will likely be in year five, you will get 25% of the net proceeds of the sale after the debt is paid and the equity is repaid. And we're going to walk through what that number is. And then once the building is sold, the new owner will continue to pay you rent equal to 25% of what the taxes would have been. And then every time the building is sold in the future, they will pay you 1% of the gross sales price. So if you go back to the page before and you say, okay, this, the first sale that they're projecting here is at $92 million. Let's just assume that the next sale is $100 million. You would get a $1 million payment on that sale. Now, I cannot tell you how often this project will sell. I can tell you that in the real estate market, the normal hold is from five to 10 years. Some parties hold forever. Some parties unload quickly. Depends on what the market's doing. But we think that you might see somewhere between one and four additional sales during the term of this lease. Your rent will escalate because your value will escalate in the building. The last page you have here, and I apologize. This page is demonstrating how inept I am at Excel because it's tiny. But what you will see on this page is that closing, you will get $250,000. In year two, you'll receive a payment of $47,000. That's just an administrative fee. And it's generally $25,000 a year, but it's not paid until year two. You'll see in year five that you get $7,407,000. That's the projected sale in year five, and that's your share of that sale. They then show rent continuing in this model of 160, 175, 191. I want to tell you that this is Mr. Breimer's proposal, and it is not based on the 25% of the taxes. It's based on 25% of the revenue. So your numbers will actually be higher than this. And, and I'll, I'll rerun those numbers and bring them back to you. But I, my best guess is that your rent number per year will start at $200,000 to $250,000 and will go up from there. And will happen every year as long as the lease is in place. The numbers below that are the payments that will be made to the equity partners. And you can see, while you're making $7 million out of this on the sale, they're making 43. It's a much better return that you have with zero investment and a $7 million return. And they're going to invest $22 million and get back 43. Now, I say that a little tongue in cheek because you are making other investments as a city. You always do. You, you will, like every single building out there, you have police patrols, you have fire patrols, you do make an investment in that, in just running your city. But your return is going to be much better if, in fact, this deal performs as they have performed. I, I cannot guarantee you that it will perform that way. I can tell you, look at your community, think about what you think the success of this deal will be in your community. I think it will be very high. I have done about 20 of these deals. We have sold four of them. All four of them upon sale outperformed the pro forma by a significant margin. And the reason that they do that is because the tax value increases, it, it's 40% of the budget. And it increases at, at a higher rate than generally inflation. And so investors look at these deals when buying them as a stable, low-risk deal from a purchase perspective. And so they have, they have brought about maximum sales prices in our community, at least when we've seen them sell. So I have not been involved in a deal of this type that has had an issue. And, and I will admit to you that I could probably give you better information about what happens when a deal goes bad if I had. But I haven't. All of them has been successful. We will negotiate documents that will do everything we can possibly do to ensure that you have no risk in this transaction. Can't guarantee you'll make the money that we're showing you here. But I, I'm going to do everything, and I believe we, we have a great structure that will eliminate your risk in participating in this transaction. So that's an overview of the numbers. Now, I have to tell you that if any of you enjoy numbers, I can get you numbers. I can get you numbers, full detailed number runs. I just didn't think it was worth going through all of that on a public meeting. But if that's something you'd like to see, or you have somebody else you'd like to look at them. We can make that arrangement to, to have that done. Um, if this will be an open book transaction. Once this deal closes, you will have full access to all books and records. Um, and so you, you are the owner of this project. There will be nothing hid from you. And so you have a right to see and do whatever you wish to do. So in terms of the numbers, um, that's the basic number run. We have not negotiated these numbers. If the council is, is willing to do it, I would love to have a very quick executive session to talk about that. And we can do that at any time, but I'd like to have some guidance. I have some specific questions. Um, about what in the numbers we need to do to try and help protect your community. And where we should go with some of these numbers. So I'd, I'd like some guidance from that perspective. And other than that, I'm open for questions.
Mr. Israel. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Palmer. Thank you for your presentation. Um, you said that all the deals that you've been involved with have been successful. How, how, um, how recent or how long in involvement has that been?
Yeah, yeah, um, I changed the legislation in twenty sixteen. We did our first deal in twenty seventeen. So not long. Since twenty seventeen, we've had four of those deals sell, all of which have sold successfully. Um, at, at more than pro forma amounts. And so, um, but that, that is a finite set of information.
Mr. Gregory.
I appreciate your presentation. Under annual fees on the last page, I noticed that there's static dollar amount from year seven on out. And then the reason for that is what?
Uh, the. Yeah, the static dollar amount is in the twenty-eight, nine, eighty-two, correct? Kind of hard to see, I apologize. Okay.
Year seven, year eight, year nine, and year ten.
That, that is, that number should be increasing by CPI. They just didn't do it.
All right, that, that begs another question. You said that's twenty-five percent of revenues, not taxes.
No, sir. We, we charge, we peeled in an administrative fee of twenty-five thousand dollars. You may want to hire an auditor. You, you, who knows what you're going to want to do in terms of hiring people to look at things. So we build in a fee for twenty-five thousand dollars a year just to give you money to administer this process. The, the number above that is the actual income from the project. Um, twenty-five percent of the income from the project.
Right now, you're, the people who have apartments are in the catbird seat because there's a shortage of apartments. But we've seen periods, especially in Texas, uh, long periods. Where it's the other way around. Apartment complexes are empty. They were tearing down, I think it was one a week in Houston for a year. Uh, my question is this, I have several questions. Are future owners legally bound to the current structure that you are forcing the next owner to have?
Yes.
There's no way they can get out.
They will have a lease. If they want to walk away from the lease, you get the building free and clear and their banks are never going to let them walk away from the lease.
If the revenues drop, if we have deflation. Which we haven't experienced, well, Texas has in the, in the, in the residential area, we had that for quite a while. But if we have a, if we have a country in which we have deflation. What if, what is the effect of deflation on these very, uh, rosy numbers that we have here? Any effect at all?
Um, yes, absolutely. If we have deflation on the rent side, let's start there. And you're getting paid twenty-five percent of what the taxes would have been on the project. Theoretically, they could go to bear appraisal district, just like any other building in this city and have their value reduced. And so, you know, today your rent is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we have deflation, value of apartments go down. They go to the appraisal district, they contest the value, they pay less taxes. Pay less rent to you under this structure. It's the same as if they were paying taxes. So yes, it can happen. Now. On the sale scenario. Um, that value decrease, um, I would say. Could be very serious for them and for you. And they might not sell the project during that period of deflation. Um, so then you would not get your funds in year five. They would wait until the value of the project goes back up and they can recover all of their costs. And then they would sell the project. But this, this is a real estate deal.
So the project is hinges upon continued growth and inflation.
No, the project continues upon the, the pro forma assumes, we, we covered this a little while ago, three percent increase. In rents and two percent increase in expenses. The pro, the project does, it, it is dependent on. An increase in value.
So the seven million dollars possibly distributed in year five could vanish. If we have difficulty in the real estate industry, deflation or just stagflation. It could vanish, it probably wouldn't increase, but it could probably drop significantly from this figure.
It, I have to tell you, it could, depends on how bad the inflation is or deflation of values. It could. Yeah, this, this deal. Just like every building in your city could decrease in value.
When our revenue is, you said is not based on taxes. It, so forty percent of your apartment, of this apartment being built. Is I use a, look at the numbers, is for people paying about eleven hundred dollars a month. Yeah, on five, five hundred square foot apartment. If you reach a time in which they're just not filling up. Are you required to pay us any money? Or, or you're just saying, I'm sorry, uh, we can't do it at this time.
What will actually happen is you're going to come behind the bank. Okay, so they got to pay their banker first. Once the banker is paid, you'll be the next in line. I- is there a scenario where we're in the Great Depression again and nobody's getting paid for anything? Don't think so, but you know. This building operates no differently than every other building you have in your community in terms of paying you or paying taxes. So if the fact pattern you're suggesting. Is that the value of all real estate in your community has gone down. And therefore you're not receiving as much money. Yes, that could happen, but it's, it's, it's the same for everything you do. And if this building was taxable. You'd have the exact same issue.
Well, we stood on the brink ten years ago. With the great recession of everything just collapsing. We were right on the razor edge. So it's not an improbable thing. It, we, we went up to the edge of that cliff and barely stopped from going over that cliff. Um, a mere ten or eleven years ago. So this is, I'm not going back to the thirties. I'm just going back to twenty, twenty oh nine and twenty ten.
And hopefully.
Is there a scenario that future owners just simply. What they find they can't fill it. It costs too much to run it with the number of people who are leasing. They just walk away. And if they walk away, they just pay us, pay us what? Not a percentage of revenue, I hope.
No, it would be a percentage of the tax value. And what you're talking about is a economic, total economic collapse. If there was a, if you're worried and you're planning your city based on a total economic collapse. You, you, you're going to have a difficult time doing any of these deals.
No, but I think economic collapse is, hopefully unlikely. I'm, I'm seeing a scenario of ten years of stagnation. Which could easily happen, happened before. It, I mean, it took, it took eleven years. From the time I purchased my house to get back to even.
Ten years of stagnation would let them pay the rent. In the, in the ninth year of stagnation, you wouldn't make any money on a sale. They wouldn't do the sale. And then they would wait and sell the property when they have real value. Um, and, and that, that is the chance you take in a real estate deal. The truth is that if you want the opportunity to get a seven million dollar payoff in five years. You have to assume some risk that the property won't perform as you had hoped.
See, that's the point that Ms. Patterson was talking about. Managing risk, cities managing risk. This is a dramatic, dramatic increase. Amount of risk cities, cities are expected to have. I mean, we're in this thing trying to get one, one hundredth of one basis point more. And then this other thing, managing risk is what cities have to do. This is taking a substantial risk, not just a minor risk. Difference between a thirty-year treasure and a fifteen-year treasury. This is a major real estate risk that may work out very well, maybe just grand as can be. But it's a big, big change. How cities whose primary goal is to manage risk are going to.
Let, let me address that. It is a big change. But you're doing this to managing your risk. We create the Public Facility Corporation and we do a structure that helps manage your risk. When you talk about a city managing risk, you're talking about a city incurring cost. We believe that our structure is such that you will not incur cost. In this deal, you are managing to try and make sure you get your profits. But even in the downside scenario, you should not have any risk in this transaction. Except you don't get your profits. You still get your taxes that you would have gotten in the form of rent. But you might not make a profit. And so, um, we think that this is a good way to manage risk. What it really does is it gives you upside potential that you don't have on a tax structure. Without giving you the downside potential of actually putting money into a deal. And so. As this deal is structured, if you're getting the same amount you would have gotten as taxes. You don't have any downside. What you have is upside. And that's what we're trying to, to cover is we're trying to get the opportunity to gain upside potential. And limit and eliminate the downside risk.
Well, I think it's a. Other remarkable statement that there is zero downside risk. I don't believe that for a second. Uh, I think there is substantial downside risk, however small that risk is. I think it exists. I like this going back and forth because thrashing this out is, is the way things clarify in my mind. Things, I think these big numbers of the city is going to get seven million dollars in there. I mean. That is so much low lying fruit and the enticement. I can almost see the mouths drooling for the money right now and not looking beyond that. I mean, I'm not going to live seventy-five years, but this is going to have a major impact to the city and I, to. You're saying, well, no, no one is interested in that property. They're never going to build on it. They had it in the past. They're certainly not going to do it in the future. We got a piece of property on, we don't, but there's a piece of property that bucks four-ten. Asking a lot of money for it, she's not selling for it. So the, the idea that somebody's not going to build because they haven't built is no argument at all.
Well, but the idea that you will look at the, the effect. Of waiting five years, ten years, fifteen years. Is, is really important because if you, if you continue to collect twenty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. For a ten-year period. And you compare that to the potential upside revenue stream. The upside is going to be far greater. And so it's, it is important to look at that and, and I, I absolutely agree with you. Every piece of property in this damn city is going to be built on because it's a great city. But what's it going to be? We don't know. So we make some, some educated guesses. And we look at, okay, is this a better deal than doing nothing? If you do nothing and it is ten years before something is built. You will have recovered more money on the day this deal closes than that ten years, ten years of vacant land.
Well, I mean, that's sort of obvious, but it's based on the premise, if we don't do something now, no one will ever come.
No, I don't, I don't think that's, that's the implication. The other thing that I don't think is really the implication is. That. This is necessarily the absolute best use that you'll, you could ever have. I mean, truthfully. They, they looked at a medical office building. It has higher traffic impact, but it has other benefits. And so, I, you know, we, we can't predict what's going to happen. We, we take a stab at it. So that you can get a feel for, for what might happen or not happen and what the economic effect of it is. But we don't have a crystal ball and so we don't know what's going to happen to that tract of land.
Speaking for myself, I really would want somebody, if they're going to do something like this. Have a stake in our city that will last longer than five or six years. I want to have somebody who is going to be here for a long period of time. Really has a vested interest in ensuring. That this, the risk of a real estate venture like this is mitigated substantially by the best efforts of a long-term. Investor. This is not, this is short-term land speculation and having a flip. And it's based on, we'll get more if we can flip it, of cour-, if we don't have deflation, if we have great economy, blah, 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 blah. It all looks really good in the short run if all the things occur. But. This. I, I just want somebody who has a longer term vested interest in Castle Hills of longer than three, four, five, six years.
But it's in your best economic interest to have this property sell in year five. You will get more return. Um, if it sells at that time. I, I very much understand what you're saying. But the, part of the beauty of this structure is that because it's fifty percent market rate. Maybe, maybe in reality, it's more than fifty percent market rate, given the rent structure. They have an enormous economic incentive to maintain this property at the highest possible level. Because that maximizes their profits. And so, it, no matter who buys this property, they're going to have the same incentive. To maximize profits and to run it at the highest level, highest rents they can get. And that's part of the difference between this kind of structure and the low income structures. Where they have no economic incentive to maintain the property. Here they have an enormous economic incentive to maintain the property. And, um, it, it, so far, it has proven to be true. And it, it is. The economic incentive to a developer is far better than anything I can put on paper. Because that's what drives them.
Well, a four-year history is an awfully short history.
I agree.
Say, we're going to, we're going to gamble on a real estate project. City will gamble its future away on a real estate project. It may work out fabulous. It may bring us millions of dollars. And again, there, those unanswered questions that I can't think of, but they're lingering out there of pitfalls. And I, I just go back to this person from Texas Municipal League who's a. And I, I just go back to this person from Texas Municipal League who's a Fulbright scholar who runs $7 billion. And she called it extremely risky, extremely risky.
I, I, I think she has no idea about this structure. I have no idea what the woman's talking about.
She said she was very intimately knowledgeable of it.
I will find out. I will get her name and information. I will, I will contact her.
Good.
And I'll let you know how the discussion goes.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Paul, I think you have a question.
Yeah, just, just some real quick ones that follow up on a couple of things you said. I want to be sure I'm clear. The PFC owns the property.
Yes, sir.
And the owners of the PSC, the owners are the people with the equity. We don't own anything.
No, you, you.
The PFC.
Yeah. Let me start at the top.
Okay, good.
City council members sit on the board of the PFC.
Correct.
Totally control it.
Correct.
It owns the property.
PFC owns it.
PFC owns the property.
Okay.
Will do a long-term lease
Right.
to the equity investors in the deal.
Well, the equity investors are the ones that have the shares and the interest in the PFC as far as the dollars are concerned?
They, they have no interest in the PFC. There will be a long-term lease to an entity that Mr. Brimer will form. And the equity investors will buy into.
And to clarify another thing, if for some reason in the foreseeable long time future that there's a foreclosure on this property, the people foreclose on it still have to pay the taxes.
Well, they have a choice, actually. They can foreclose on the leasehold.
Right.
And if they foreclose on the leasehold, you're still the owner. The project remains tax exempt.
Right.
If they foreclose on the fee interest, which they will have a right to do, then they have to pay the taxes.
Right.
So either way, now, we typically have a provision that says that if it is foreclosed upon, remember, it's, if it's foreclosed upon, there's no income coming in.
Right.
We normally give them a five-year rent holiday so they can go out and find a new set of investors and bring them in. And what we're trying to do is give that investor an incentive to make any investments they need, including to maintain the property at the highest level.
Well, the, the, the first time when we started this hunt, I thought I heard you say, or somebody said that upon each sale, we would participate in any potential profit.
You actually would. It's, it's, you actually participate in 25% of the increase in value from sale to sale to sale.
Okay, well, I didn't hear that tonight. I heard you just say the one. Okay, I want to be sure. And then when you do, you run out of taxes. Also do it on, if we continue to keep the raw piece of ground, what that looks like 10 years, 15 years. Somebody told me or made a comment. It was like we were getting the city taxes off with 6,000 or 7,000 a year. That's pretty easy to figure out, but it might be nice to show it in the examples of the different analysis that you do.
What we'll do is we'll run it assuming a development in five years, 10 years, and 15.
I look at, I'm used to doing big, little things, not anything big, but always look for the back door, always look for the worst case scenario. To me, the worst case scenario is there's no profit at the end of the run, but look what we've done in the meantime. Which to me, I think the gentleman made a comment, that'd be 10 times what we would get if we were, if we didn't go into this project and somebody else did an identical market value project without the PFC. And that's, okay, I'm, I'm done. I thought I said it all.
I mean, I, I, I don't know if it's 10 times, but.
No, but it's a multiple.
Yes, it is.
Yes, thank you. And these are the type of information, the type of facts and things that when you come back with the document, then we can look at and you'll have what's necessary for us to move forward.
Frank, do you think that it is more profitable for the city and more beneficial for the city to have a PFC or private equity group to come in and build a building and hold it for the long term?
Well, yeah, if you're speaking dollars only, you've got two things here. And I used this a little while ago. If you've got two projects here, you've got this one here, a developer coming to his thing. And then we have the PFC. Well, one of the things we have under the PFC is control of the property from the lease and the way it's written in the get-go. And you've got to stand by that and do that. And that's up to him. The other thing is, let's just use some around numbers. Right now, a $60 million project in our city would run what? $30,000 a year in taxes specifically for Castle Hills. But if you're looking at the other project, you're looking at a much more expensive taxes because you've taken all the taxes into consideration. And it's much more higher multiple that we would see. So the question becomes, if you had this or had this, dollar-wise, which one's better and control-wise, which one's better? Now, the other things we have to jump through, the traffic and all these other things, you're going to have to do the same thing with the other project. Am I 100% clear on this? Am I 100% for this? No, but I'm certainly in, in the, in the positive framework thinking that it's a good thing to move forward to get all the additional facts because I'm learning.
Mr. Mr. Plummer, it may be glaringly obvious, but I feel like given the fact that we would make more with taxes, with the percentage of taxes they're willing to pay than the percentage of taxes that we would get, we're, we're going to make more going this way as opposed to a $60 million building, whatever that was doing.
That is correct. You would make significantly more.
One point of clarification I would like to find out is I've heard the 25% of the sale and then you also said the 1%.
Yeah, the 1%, I'm, I'm sorry, I got deal merge. It's 25% of the increase in value.
Okay, so 25% every deal going forward, every time there's a change of hands.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we would determine in the agreement how much, what would determine profit, gross profit, net profit, what the deductions are, what's taken out of, what's the normal process, as opposed to just throwing it up and let it be at, at a whim.
So if there's no profit, Power Life Building was built for $2 million and two years later, two and a half years later, sold it for $900,000. If there's no profit on the sale from the building, because sometimes people want to sell and take a loss.
That's up to them.
What, so that means we get zero. Because there's no profit.
It, could, could the building be sold without a profit? The answer to that would be yes. It would have to be a pretty severe deflationary time for that to happen. And so Mr. Brimer would be out of business. And, you know, it, we, even in 2008, nine, and 10, my guess is in 2008, nine, or 10, if you built a building that got completed in 2008, probably by 2011, you would probably be able to make some profit, but I don't know how much. If you held that building to 2013, you would make a considerable profit. So that's just part of the real estate market. But let's, let's go to the worst case for a moment. Let's just assume that the world collapses and the, not a single piece of real estate can be sold in this state anywhere, period. And the bank takes the property back. The equity providers would lose all their money. The bank would be in a position of selling the building, which costs $62 million. They would have 41 million in it. So they would instantly have 20% equity. They could hold it. They could sell it. Whenever the appraisal district set the tax value at, you would get the equivalent of 25% of what the total taxes would be at that tax value. That is more than you would get if the building was taxable.
Can the bank sell their participating interest?
In the loan?
Yep.
Yeah, they could sell the participating interest in the loan, but that wouldn't change. When you have a participating interest in a loan, still, there's only one lead bank who makes the decisions about foreclosure, non-foreclosure. It'd be the same set of decisions.
Well, the real world has shown we've had three periods of deflation. We haven't had, the world hadn't collapsed. Stars didn't fall from the skies.
Correct.
You've had periods of anywhere between two and 12 years of flat prices or deflating prices or prices that rose substantially lower than inflation. So that's, it's, it's, you have to look at the real world and not come with a ridiculous thing saying nothing works, the world, everything's collapsed, no one to do anything.
Now you're fighting against your argument that you want a long-term holder.
I do want a long-term holder.
I mean, your, your best least risk is to take advantage of the market you're in and sell it as soon as you can as opposed to having a crystal ball about what a long-term holder might do in the future. And that's part of the reason that there is an advantage to dealing with somebody like Mr. Brimer, who's going to build it, stabilize it, and sell it. Because he's going to take advantage of the market that we're in. And the market we're in is pretty darn hot. And so I do understand your concept about a long-term holder. And second buyer may be a long-term holder. But there's also an advantage to having somebody build it and, and be ready to sell it so that you will make a profit on that initial sale.
Possible problem.
Yeah, so far, every one of them's been that way.
Mr. Brown.
I had one follow-up question from my earlier ones, Mr. Plummer. I'm sorry. You said you've done about 20 of these deals. Are any of those 20 in scenarios similar to Castle Hills in terms of size, economy, anything like that?
Yes, none of those have sold, but yes. I've done several in suburban cities. We've done them in Travis County suburban area, Huntsville, Barney, Sibolo. Trying to think of what else is comparable.
But we would, we would be able to look at one of those as an example and say, this is very similar to a scenario that you would see in Castle Hills.
I have to say that the quality of the project that is being proposed for your community is higher than the quality of the project that was proposed in, I think, Sibolo and Huntsville and maybe Bernie. Because this is, the, the, just looking at the pictures, this is the very top end of the market. That would be the only distinction.
And the, the institutional knowledge, if you will, that's been accumulated during this is only three or four years old then, right?
Yes, sir.
So we really don't have a model we could look at and see from step to step just yet.
Not, not beyond the four-year period.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Mr. Plummer, given many of these that you've done, do you have a pretty accurate idea of what the administrative costs look like?
Um, the, I think the administrative cost in, in the deals that I've done, we make them get a file audit to show the 50 to 80. The, the investors often going to require an audit at the end of the deal. There, there really is not a lot of administrative cost associated with it. You are going to receive during construction, monthly construction draws. Post-construction, you're going to receive quarterly financials. I would recommend that somebody look at those. And really what you're looking for in those is to just see how the project's operating. You know, if, if the project's at 96% and the next quarter it's at 86%, somebody ought to be over there banging on that, that manager going, what happened? Where is this going? Why is this the case? Beyond that, you don't have any real responsibility, except very much like you're doing now. Somebody should be looking at it, should be asking questions and should understand the differential. It certainly would not justify an employee at the city level. And that's part of the reason we get an administrative fee is because you can ask an asset manager to do that for, I think, I think we're getting charged $10,000 a year by an asset manager at the housing trust per transaction.
Assuming that you have to go bang on the door because there's a digression in the progress, what remedy does the, the board have in that regard?
If it, if the answer is my manager fell asleep, my onsite manager fell asleep on the job, once again, the economic incentive to maximize profits being brought to the developer's attention will usually solve that. If the answer is that there is a lease violation, then you would have the right as a landlord to send them a notice of default. If the answer is that they're just not maintaining this building, you walk over there and it's just not a Class A project. It's not being maintained as a Class A project. You send them a notice of default. You send it to their equity partner and their lender as well. And trust me, the equity partner and lender will be all over it. The equity partner's got a $22 million investment that he's going to lose because somebody's not picking up the trash. That's not going to happen. So your, your most powerful weapon is that lease and saying that they're in default under the lease. Because if, if they're in default under the lease, you're, you're going to have a lot of rights. And so that, that is a very powerful weapon in being able to tap into the third-party equity and the bankers and basically tattle on the developer is, is very, very strong. The other thing that you do have, quite frankly, for Scott, maybe not for the next owner, but for Scott, he makes his living before government entities. And to have a government entity not be happy with him basically shuts down his economic development activity. Because he goes to some other city and they say, oh, wait a minute, you've got a deal in Castle Hills. I'm reading in the newspaper that they're upset with you. And so he, he has to maintain the project and keep you happy because that's how he makes his living.
Okay, one last question, Mr. Plummer. Class A, is that a legal definition? Is that an industry definition? And what constitutes that?
It, it is not a legal definition. And, and in fact, I have never been able to find a definition that I could convert to a legal definition. Class A is really a term describing the highest quality available in the market. If, if you asked any real estate person who dealt in apartments right now, they would tell you that Class A properties have this amenity, this amenity, this amenity, et cetera. And it does change over time. And so what we will do, and if you, if you want, we can pick standards in the community. But as a general rule, it is viewed as the highest quality apartment project in the community of its age. Yes, if you, of its age is actually important. If you, I'm trying to think of some of the old high-end apartments.
Bushnell?
Yeah, if you look at Bushnell, it, it's got a different design. It's got a different amenity package than what this project will have. And, and no equity investor will allow us to say, you have to keep up with the Joneses and continuously provide the latest, greatest that is built. Because that requires structural changes that are not economical. And so if you, if you build this project in 2022, you're going to want to compare it to other projects built in the 2022 era. So of its age is an important part of that. When you get to 2050 and you're looking at the standard, this project may not be Class A for what's being built in 2050. And so they've got to, they've got to maintain it as it was built. But if in 2050, there, there's some new master electronic system that you can't retrofit, they would not have an obligation to go in and install it unless they chose to because it would maximize their rents. They would not have an obligation to go in and install it unless they chose to because it would maximize their rents. Honestly, Councilman, I don't have the expertise to answer that question, maybe Scott could, but I. I, I, I'd be guessing.
Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
They were in this high rise apartment building. Can't remember the name of it right now. Still in existence. But boy, it is gone, it is gone downhill to where it's. Seedy as can be, a beautiful building. And it was built. A trillion years ago. And I just. That's the trouble with high rise rental. That it has over time, less. People fascinated by it and more people looking elsewhere. The latest and greatest and you get a different type of clientele. Over time, it slowly changes. That's what my grandfather told me and he was at the second oldest, largest real estate firm in North Carolina. And it changes over time significantly changes. Unless you're at a beach. But it doesn't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plummer, do we have any further questions, Mr. Isbram, you look pensive.
I'm, I'm sorry, it says we go through the discussion, other things come up. Did I hear you say correctly that the obligation would be to maintain it as it was built?
Maintain it as a class A property given the year it was built, yes.
Okay, so. If ten years from now in the Jetsons era, there's some new fancy way that you push a button and your food comes out and that's what every apartment complex has or whatever. This one is not required to do that. Because it has to maintain class A from the year it was built, is that?
It's not required to do that.
I'm sorry?
It is not required.
It is not required to do that.
It's just like every other apartment in this community. There would be an issue they would have to wrestle with as part of their ability to attract tenants.
Okay, so then, so that there's, there's a risk factor there then?
Well, it's, it is the exact same risk factor that every apartment project has.
That, right.
It is.
That wouldn't push the button and the food comes out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plummer, we'll proceed to item six point three, discussion and possible action authorizing brace will LP to proceed with preparation of a community development plan for a community development program. For the city of Castle Hills, Ms. Fernandez.
Hi, good evening. So we talked about the first step being create the PFC, a PFC is a structure that's permitted under state law and if you were a home rule city. You would have already all the capabilities to do a housing project under that structure as a general law city, we have one more step. Which is to create a community development plan and that would assert your authority for housing within the city of Castle Hills as the city. And it's also an opportunity to lay out some of your goals and priorities for the housing that the city is going to pursue. So community development plan is geographically confined, so in this situation, I would imagine that that we do something. Along the commercial corridor in Castle Hills of Northwest Military, but that's flexible and so we'll take. Your thoughts on on the geography you would want for this, the goal is to create housing diversity, that's statutory. It's typically imagined to bring. Higher income housing into a lower income area, ways incentives that you might have ways you might draw. Investment that would not naturally occur. But in this situation, we say you've got land where investment will not, is not going to naturally occur for this kind of a housing. Project and so. Community development program would be an appropriate way to say. We'd like to see more diversity in the housing within Castle Hills, we'd like to encourage. Housing that would be more economically accessible for policemen, nurses, the workforce program we've talked about. And then you could create other goals, if the housing is going to be adjacent to the rural district. We want to make sure we're mitigating traffic in the rural district, we can, you know, we can layer in some of the other pieces. To outline some of the goals that would be separate from the specific actions of the PFC, this would be more of. It may be a city imagining or planning document. And so the way that that we proceed with the community development plan is a plan is drafted. It's published on your website and we hold a public hearing on this draft plan and you take comments on it and then once. You've accumulated those comments, we can create a final version of the plan for the city's approval. And that would be a required step. Those required three steps in order to proceed with. With the kind of projects that we're talking about under the PFC. So I dropped a lot out there, are there questions?
So instead of letting the marketplace determine what's to be built. The government is coming in and mandating diversity of building and who lives where.
So I mean, in a lot of communities, government sees. Planning and creating their goals is one of their functions and so you create the goals and then you help to organize. The best way to achieve those goals, whether it's through direct incentives, whether it's through a PFC. But many cities as part of their capital improvement program, as part of their long range planning and short range planning. Layout goals and then they try to help bring those desired outcomes.
If you didn't have a plan that included diversity. Would it, would it cause the government to step in and mandate it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, you're talking about may having city having a plan. And it. You implied that it should have diversity of bringing in. People into certain areas of the city they may not otherwise go, high income into low income, et cetera, et cetera. If the city did not have such a plan. Would it be subject to federal scrutiny? Or not?
Now, the, the point of the community development plan and the city asserting a housing goal. Is so that you can. Create the authority under state statute to participate in housing as a city, you don't, as a general law city, you don't automatically have that authority. So this is an avenue where you can. Declare that authority and then you can utilize that authority through the PFC.
And a general law city doesn't have that authority for what purpose? Why do you think they don't give it to general law cities?
General law cities have no authority except for what is expressly provided in statute, home rule cities can create charters. And they can expand their authority to anything not prohibited by statute. So as a general law city, you've got very limited authority, almost mirroring what a county can do with some distinctions. But you do have the opportunity through either your economic development corporation, if you wanted to go that route or through a community development plan. And there's other reasons, other ways that you could expand some of your authority, but but you can expand your authority into housing. Relatively simply under state statute if you choose to.
But all the point I'm making is the reason a general law city doesn't have it is it's usually too small. To be able to tackle something like this successfully. Not that it can't do it, but it could be too small. And it could run afoul of federal mandating, who knows what? If we have this. Out there. Somewhere down the road, federal government could come and say, no, you're discriminating.
Is it a mandate, Ms. Fernandez?
I, yeah, I'm not following the mandate discussion. The community development program was really, I mean, that language in state law is really created to mirror HUD goals. I mean, it's designed to be an implementation tool for federal programs and that's. That's the reason that.
Well, see, there's no point. I don't see why this has to be done for a, a general law city. Because we, first, we can't do it right now because we're too small and we're getting smaller. And. The re, the reason it's not mandated for our size is because. Just may not be able to do it correctly.
It's not mandated for any size. But any size city can create a community development plan for a number of purposes, if you want to participate in a housing project. And you, you want to to do that through the PFC, we have to first assert your authority to participate in housing. And this is an avenue to do that.
So in order to get the PFC, we have to do this, if we don't do this, we can't do the PFC.
You need to assert your authority as a city to participate in housing before you can participate in housing.
But what I said was correct.
The PFC does not grant you housing authority, it just grants you. Public facility corporation authority, so we, there's another step if you want to do housing that we need to, that we need to take.
Thank you.
Is there a more clear way to say that?
Yes.
Mr. Isbram.
Is there a reason why it would be necessary to take action on this tonight?
Only to start the process, so we need to have an outline of community development plan that we'd then. Would bring back to you, once you felt like it was ready to go on the website, we'd publish it and take further comment. But you know, it's a little bit of a process and it needs to outline what your priorities are, it doesn't have to be a long document. I would envision that it's not a long document, we'd set the geography. We'd make the statement of diversity and then we'd add any other priorities that you state, but. At some point, we need to collect those priorities and proceed ahead if if your intention is to pursue the project.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's really why I asked the question, because at some point, if we intended to proceed. It would certainly make sense, I don't know. Maybe that's where the earlier discussion became of, we want to sign from you all, whether you're, whether you're going to support this or not, and it feels like this is. Intended may not be the right word, but certainly sends a signal there. And given that we've get received a lot of new information that we continue to ask questions that we've requested more data tonight. I wonder if it's prudent to be moving down this path before we have that kind of information to be able to assess. Whether we want to participate.
So community development plan is not going to have project specifics in it, right? This would be an opportunity to say. And I haven't, I haven't read the city's strategic plan, but, but I know that there is an interest in that strategic plan in solidifying the commercial corridor of military highway, right? So as part of that, if you were to say, we'd like to attract a multifamily project to that area because. That's good for commerce along military. Then we're going to put a little bit of framework into place, we're going to say. We'd like to see housing in that corridor, we're going to say, we want to make sure that housing doesn't impact. Unnecessarily the traffic in the rural district that we just created. And, and there may be other goals that you have, we want to make sure that that, that if there's housing that it's. Well lit and that there's pedestrian improvements and, you know, this would be your chance to kind of lay out some of those goals. It does not require you to do a project, as Jim said, creating the PFC also would not. But it would put some guardrails in place that would allow you to proceed with the project. If, if that's the will of the body.
Right, and, and I ask this because I'm not sure, at least in my mind, that I, I see a need yet to put guardrails in place.
Yeah.
And you know, we haven't even received the plan from the. The strategic plan and all the work that's, that's taking place there, so trying to bolt this on somehow. I'm not sure I understand that that. Is facilitated better by going this route or not? But if we choose not to participate, there is no need to have necessarily a community development program.
That's true, also no consequence to having it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fernandez, Mr. Joyce, can I ask a quick question? One question, I'll be quick. If we decided to proceed with the CDP. Is that limit us to strictly? PFC projects or could we say that we'd like to see? A apartment and housing project there and that could be either market rent? Or something like a PFC?
Yeah, I wouldn't envision that you would link the CDP directly to the PFC, I guess you could. But the statutory objective of the, of the community development program is really just to lay out that you're interested in housing. That you want to assert your authority to undertake housing and. And then if you have other priorities, that's your opportunity to. Put them in a document.
So we could effectively put up a flag as a city and say that. If it didn't work out with the PFC that we are interested. In housing in that area.
Right, right.
Got you, okay, thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Well, I think you guys have said a lot of what I was going to say, but. You may be aware that we have a comprehensive plan on the way. And. Next week, we're presenting the status of that plan to council, actually, it's on the wall over there. Some of what we're talking about for housing has been addressed in the plan, some of it has not been addressed or requested. So I agree with, with the mayor and Councilman Isbram that there needs to be a connection between the two, we can't have one document saying one thing. And then the big document saying something else or being silent on the issue.
That's right, and so, I mean, that's exactly the kind of. Of input that we're looking for as we talk about initiating the CDP, so maybe it makes sense to work with. The, either the committee or the consultant that is working on the comprehensive plan to make sure that the documents support each other and are aligned.
Right.
That's exactly right.
I just am a little uneasy that there's a sense of inevitability being built here. That we've got to do this, it's the next thing in the road and then this, it's the next thing in the road. And that momentum. It doesn't, it's not going to stop.
Well, in my, in my mind, it's. I want to help you know the pieces that you would need to have in place if you want to keep the window open. If you don't want to keep the window open, you're not obligated to do any of this, but if you, you know. Vicaro's time is going to close March tenth. That's quick, that's coming quickly. If you want to keep the window open, I want to make sure you know exactly what pieces, what building blocks need to be there. And if this. If that's not, if that's not beneficial to you, if that's not the pathway you want to go, then it doesn't make sense to keep the building blocks.
Mr. Isbram.
Yeah, I, I think. In the interest of time, I, I would make a motion that we. I would move that we postpone this item until the regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday. So that we can hear the report, the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, excuse me, that's. Been developed as well and to be able to look at this more holistically, so I would. Move to postpone till the regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone, do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Gregory, any discussion? On favor? Pose. Okay, Mr. Mesa, pose, we propose postpone until next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Do we have any announcements? All right, that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First, I'm Mr. May, second by Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Well, okay. Unanimous, eight fifty eight, meeting is adjourned, everybody have a good evening, thank you all for joining us.